Call the meeting order. Mike, you want to lead us into the place, please.
(inaudible) 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 Thank you. Ann, would you call it? Roll, please.
Mr. Gerber, Mrs. Boring, Mr. Keenan, Mr. Reiner, Mayor Lecliter, Vice Mayor Saleh.
Here.
Mr. Genese Salka will be absent.
Thank you. Ann, I don't see anyone signed up.
No, we don't have any.
I don't have any sign-in sheets.
Right.
Moving on then to the consent agenda. Would ask council members if anyone wishes to remove any of the five items listed. During none, I would move that we approve the actions requested for the five items listed on the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ann, if you call for the vote, please.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Great, thank you. Ordinance forty-dash-twelve.
Yes.
Authorizing provision of certain incentives to Boundary Medical LLC to induce it to expand Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
an office and associated operations and workforce within the city and authorizing execution Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes.
of an economic development agreement.
Great, thank you. Moving on to the second readings. Thank you. Mr. Clary, how are you? Ordinance thirty-nine dash twelve.
Authorizing the city manager to execute necessary conveyance documentation for the
Good, thank you. Good evening, members of council. I'll briefly recap from first reading on June fourth. This economic development agreement with Boundary Medical is in support
acquisition of a 1.385 acre more or less feasible interest and another 1.480 acre more or less feasible interest from Herbert E. Jones and Janet F. Jones.
of an expansion resulting from an out-of-state consolidation. The expansion would result
Thank you.
Yeah, Paul's not available, so we'll go ahead. This is additional properties, two
in fifty-five new jobs at an average wage of $47,000 a year. The expansion would occur
parcels related to Emerald Parkway Phase Eight, the future construction of that roadway.
at the company's national headquarters located here in Dublin. The proposed agreement in
And there is a map on the back of the information that identifies the right-of-way and then
support of the project is a five-year, 25 percent performance incentive capped at $50,000
the proposed permanent and temporary easement. We had appraisals completed on the property
for the term of the agreement. And tonight, as promised from first reading, I'll introduce
that came in at 451 and based on negotiations were at 496 as far as the acquisition of
Mark Doherty, CFO of Sarnova, the parent company, to explain a bit more about the project
what the entire properties that are needed. We had originally looked at buying only the
and take any questions that you might have.
Great, thank you.
Good evening.
necessary right-of-way and easement, but due to the impact on the structures or the homes on the property, it was determined that it was appropriate for the city to acquire
Good evening. How are you?
Good. A little introduction, if you would. You are Mike Doherty.
the total parcels for both of those parcels. And if you have any questions, we'd be happy
Actually, Mark Doherty.
Mark, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
All right.
to answer.
And I serve as the Chief Financial Officer for Sarnova, which is the parent company
Questions or comments? Hearing none. Ann, if you call for the vote, please.
for Boundary Medical, and also serve as the CFO for Boundary Medical as well. And we
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
appreciate the opportunity to be here and be in consideration for the economic incentive.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Boundary has a long history within Dublin. We have been, I believe, in the Dublin area for eight years now and have seen a significant increase in our employment over those eight years. And we look forward to continued expansion in our business and the opportunities to create more jobs here in the Dublin area.
How long has the company been in existence?
Under its current ownership, the company's been in existence for just over four years. The company, Sarnova, was formed in June of 2008 and in which it merged two independent companies, one being Boundary Medical, which was headquartered here in Dublin, Ohio, the other being Trianum Health Services, which was headquartered in Silmar, California. Shortly after those companies were brought together in the formation of Sarnova, many of the back-office operations were identified to relocate to the Dublin office. And we have, in essence, turned much of our Silmar, California, office into primarily a customer service and sales administration office.
And so primarily a distributor of specialty medical products?
We are. We actually, the company is a collection of three distinct specialty medical distribution companies. Boundary Medical is the largest distributor of emergency medical equipment to the pre-hospital market. So the easiest way to think about that is whoever may be a first responder, everything from being, you know, local ambulance service to a medic in the field for the Department of Defense, would be the customer for Boundary Medical. On Trianum, they are the leading specialty distributor of respiratory products in the United States. And the easiest way to think about that is anything that's related to a patient's airway, from emergency room through surgery through recovery, would be the primary customer base for Trianum. And they serve the thousands of respiratory therapists throughout the country. And then, emergency medical products where EMP out of Waukesha, Wisconsin, serves the same pre-hospital market as Boundary, but they have a different go-to-market strategy where it's primarily internet and catalog only, where Boundary focuses on a field-sales-force-driven organization.
Can you tell us what your annual revenues are?
We're privately held, so I can't speak to that specifically.
It's fine. I was just curious.
I appreciate it.
So have you been with the company for the, did I hear you say, eight years?
I've been with Boundary for eight years. And when Boundary, when Sarnova was created, I was elevated to the CFO position of Sarnova and retained my responsibilities as CFO for Boundary and then for Trianum as well.
Can you speak to the decision-making process which resulted in Boundary being located in Dublin?
I can. Through the years, we've been very acquisitive. In the four years since Sarnova was created, we've had four acquisitions. And during each of those times, we've had the opportunity to evaluate the different locations, where the companies we acquired, their workforce, and the strengths that they've had. And we have evaluated that against the Boundary core group, which is headquartered here in Dublin. And based on, you know, the quality of the workforce here in Dublin, the support from the city with the tax incentives, and the ability to reach out and grow without putting pressure on the local job market have all been incentives for us to continue to grow our positions here. You know, we currently are executing against the strategy of aligning our core functions under one leadership. Then we consolidate into one location to get the leverage of the management team and the value of our core processes. We then invest in enabling technologies to allow that workforce to be more productive. And then that enables us to grow with a minimum impact of additional headcount. As we go through this strategy, the Dublin location was identified as our preferred location for our consolidation and investment.
That's great. Great. Any other comments or questions of Mark? Well, Mark, glad to have you here.
Appreciate the opportunity.
And glad to hear that you're going to continue to be here in another great company in the city portfolio.
Thank you.
It's good to meet you.
Thank you. Pleasure.
Thank you. Ann, if you call for the vote, please.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter. Yes. Thank you. Moving on to the resolution phase of the agenda. Resolution thirty-one dash twelve.
Adopting the City of Dublin Goals for 2012, 2013.
Introduction, please.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Do you want me to read this or just answer questions?
Gotcha.
All right. Just making sure.
Good evening, Lieutenant. How are you?
All right. How are you all doing today?
Good.
The history behind this, as you know, it says in here that it was built in 1993. And when you shoot bullets at this thing for a while, it pretty much breaks down. It's kind of simple in a nutshell. But the reason we're looking at Meggitt is they were the original installer of this system. So, but we didn't want to take that for granted, so we did some research. And my range team did a lot of research. They traveled all around central Ohio. A couple of different vendors were used by the agencies that are mentioned in the memo. And they looked to see the satisfaction of these agencies, the quality of the product, and what they had to offer. When we looked at it, we believed the retrofit with Meggitt was the best way to go. They did the original work. We've been satisfied with their maintenance for years. But when it came down to it, they just offer the equipment that we need for safety and for the ease of training. And it fits the new requirements that the states put on us regarding qualifications. So we believe if we use different contractors, the agencies that have done that, they've had to also hire a general contractor, and the service on the backend has been very poor. Because it seems in this particular industry, nobody takes responsibility. And by going with one sole vendor, it's one point of contact. They've shown that we can work with them in the past when they did the original installation, and they've kept their word. And I think going with one vendor is definitely the way to go for the product they give and the service that we can receive. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer. Questions?
No question, just a comment. I appreciate the explanation. It was thorough and easy to understand why we were making the selection that we did. And I appreciate that clarity because sometimes we get, we have questions, and I didn't have any. So appreciate that, the memo.
Michael?
Yeah, I'm curious. You mentioned some other police agencies here. Does everybody have a firing range? Hilliard, Arlington, up, Beckley, et cetera?
Yes, they do. Different ages. Most of those are recent. I know Hilliard's is only a few years old. Beckley's is new. So we were able to actually see some new products that these different vendors put out there. One of the competitors, the two competitors we had, one of them is promising that they're going to get that technology to us, and we saw what they put in. And one of the agencies.
My point really was about whether or not, is there any, is there any possibility of sharing these facilities? I don't know how often they're used or in terms of the, and I really should direct this to Marcia. We share dispatching. We share some 911 with two or three agencies. These are pretty expensive. This is a third of a million dollars. Seems like one would, it might be worthwhile to look into. And I don't know how much they're used in terms of capacity, but maybe that's, it sounds like it's too late for that at this juncture. But consistent with what we're hearing from the legislature and the governor and in terms of shared services, this looks like an ideal area to me to share a service. Just my thoughts when I read the memo.
Can I speak to that? One thing we have, we do use the range a lot. And I know Hilliard uses theirs and up Arlington uses theirs a lot. So we do spend a lot of time on each one of these. Whatever agency would take on that project, it would seriously deteriorate the range at a rapid rate. In the private industry, they have these ranges, but they budget for that because it takes a serious toll over time. And whereas we're looking since 1993, you would, if we took on that project, or if any other agency did, it would shrink that timeframe considerably because the equipment can only handle so much, you know, pounding on a regular basis. We have had discussions internally. I don't believe it's, we've taken it to Marcia at this point, but that is to open our range for possible options like that, where we could use this. So other agencies could use it periodically. And, but we haven't worked out, I think the tricky part is financially, if this, how the city would charge and things like that. But we are open to expanding that internally. How the city handles that and on the legal end, I really don't know. But it's something we wouldn't be opposed to doing.
Encourage staff, as we have opportunities like this, to give that some consideration. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Are you suggesting we shouldn't have a range? We should use someone else's or?
No, I'm suggesting that these are expensive pieces and inter-jurisdictionally, it would be an ideal way to spread that cost and use. And I don't know how many officers we have or Hilliard or other jurisdictions, but you're only talking a few hundred people using one-range facility. It seems to me you could spend your dollars a lot more efficiently by a shared, a shared use of something like this, like we did with dispatching and like we do with the 911 facility that we just authorized. So it's just a lot of money. It's a third of a million dollars.
We get a lot of requests.
It's funny how some people say a third of a million, some people say only 300,000. But for my, I really appreciate your explanation because of the wear and tear. And if there is that kind of wear and tear, and you mentioned in here that saving some time because they now have the debris collection or whatever, if it can last longer for our city, then it would mean benefit to us also. And sometimes I think consolidation of services for everything has to be looked at very carefully.
Well, that's one opinion.
And as Lieutenant Farmer mentioned, we, you know, that is something that they have thought about or considered. So we'll evaluate that further.
That's fine.
Could, would we expect under the circumstances, I mean, is this to say that the life of, you know, the existing range, I mean, in terms of what's being updated, has lasted this, you know, roughly, what, nineteen years? Is that the life expectancy of this new one? Yeah, it should be, it should be the same. The materials are higher quality now, so we are hoping they're more resilient. But there's no guarantee on that, but we are hoping. Some of the things that we're getting, such as, it's called a wireless carrier, one of the major problems we have with our old one is it's with wires. And bullets fragment when they hit and they tear up the system. Because when a bullet hits something, it just explodes. And it tears up anything around it. Well, the new system, we don't have to worry about tearing up wires because it's wireless. And it creates additional safety as well as it should add to the longevity of the carrier system. And that's been one of the major problems with our system. And how often does our policy require our officers to certify or whatever? What, can you give us a little information there? We go by with the state qualifications, which is annually. So once per calendar year, every officer has to re-qualify. We internally mandate a certain amount of training during the year. And we also have optional training during the year that we offer. So we use it on a regular basis. Every month, we'll use it a few times a month. But one time a year is the qualification that's required. Gotcha. Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay. Ann, if you call for the vote, please.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yeah, I'm going to vote now. Resolution thirty-three dash twelve.
Authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding with Dublin City Schools.
Introduction, please.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you. Mr. Irman, whenever you're ready.
Good evening. Speaking of consolidating services, it's a good segue. Resolution thirty-three dash twelve authorizes a city manager to execute a memo of understanding with regard to the community programming from the Dublin City Schools and the city's recreation programming and some of the administrative requirements of delivering those services. I've provided you a couple of different memos, keeping you updated on some of the discussions that we've had with the schools. And certainly, these are relative to some of the city council's goals, particularly with regard to seeking opportunities or exploring opportunities to expand partnerships, to either enhance services or reduce costs. So this memo of understanding is to address some of the issues and things that we've understood to exist with each entity working independently. So in 2011, Dublin City Schools started their community education programs. And when they began that service, there was a little bit of confusion amongst the community as to who was providing what services and to what degree, and how did they register for them. We had two separate entities doing the same thing in a lot of cases. There were just some of the issues that we, as the city and the schools, started having conversations about to discuss ways that we can find a better way to deliver those services. So we certainly recognize the value of all this. And so our meetings that we've had for several months now discuss some of the challenges that we face operating independently and some of the benefits that will come out of the fact that we can work together on delivering some of these things. So obviously, the obvious question is to why share the services, or, you know, share the services and the costs associated with this. I think it's pretty evident. There's a cost savings potential with this. There's ability to reduce the amount of confusion amongst the community, creating a one-stop shop for people to find the programs and register for the programs, to increase the exposure for those programs, and to find a way to make sure that what we're providing to the residents of the community, that it's based on a need, not a competition between the two entities. So we recognize those as the primary focuses as we entered into this. So when we looked at what services could be shared between the two entities, we looked at program development, the brochure development, the printing, the distribution, and the registration processing, which are the one, are the components that we found to be the most obvious to work through and try to find out how we can better serve. Some of the issues that we have here, we're both printing the A brochure two or three times a year. We're printing one three times. I think the schools were planning to do one twice this year. So looking at the shared opportunities of printing costs and the distribution costs is one area of cost savings. And the registration process of this whole thing is where it gets a little bit more, less defined. The registration here is mostly administrative work. It certainly takes manpower, hours, and associated fees to process registrations. So we were trying to find a way to create a balanced approach towards some of these shared costs. And the ones that we can define, we can easily find out where that balanced approach is so that both entities are receiving the same amount of savings. And then from the more subjective area, we refer to an eighty-five, fifteen percent revenue split between the two entities to help offset some of the registration components of that. As you know, the city has invested a lot of time and energy and money into implementing its current registration process through a robust application, through online services and so forth. And by using our system to register for the school district's programs as well, there's a way for us to minimize our cost or help recoup some of our costs for that service. And in the same time, the school's ultimately saving money as well. We looked at this as the opportunity to create a win-win-win situation, basically. We're recognizing if the community wins, the city wins, and the school district will win in executing this partnership. I have to say, the memo of understanding in front of you today, there are, there's language in there that allows for flexibility so that we can go through an entire year of this type of understanding and work through some of the details to make sure that we're establishing that balanced approach and recognizing the outcomes of this merger so that we can better define some of the benefits of this program. And in that flexibility, recognizing that both the city and the schools will work together to create reports so that you can see that measured outcome of this collaborative effort. I'll have to say, the staff is recommending the approval of this memo of understanding. I'll have to, one of the important components of this is recognizing that the school board will also have to vote on this as well. And they will be looking at this on Monday evening, the 25th, pending the outcome of the approval tonight. And tonight, we have two school district representatives here, Annette Morad in the back, Business Affairs Director, and Doug Baker, Public Information Officer for the schools. They've been the primary contacts with us to work through this, through some of these details. So I appreciate all of their hard work and efforts and helping us work through this. And I believe Doug has a few things to say. And then as soon as he's finished, we'd both be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Matt. Good evening, everyone. I'd just like to say on behalf of Dublin City Schools how excited we are to have this opportunity to share services on community education. It's been a good program for us. It's been an opportunity to get our residents into our buildings who might otherwise have been in a school for years. And so we're excited to be able to continue that and work with the city so we don't duplicate services and so we can maximize any cost savings. I've been working with Megan Cannavan in the Community Relations Division to put together a timeline for transition. We're going to do some press releases and those types of things as we get closer to the fall and when we get to the winter where we're actually coming together in one publication. We will have done a lot of publicity leading up to that point so the community is aware of, you know, the new one-stop shop of where to find their community education programs. So it's been great working with Matt and his team. And if there's any questions I can answer, I will do so. But I just wanted to thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
I have.
Kathy.
Go ahead. First off, I know this has been something that takes a long time, and I want to congratulate you on this. I think the idea of utilization of the city's facilities in total means more people can participate in different programs. And it was confusing, by the way, when I got that other bulletin from the schools. But I would congratulate both of you for doing this for the community. It makes total sense. No, it wasn't easy, but I think it will turn out to be beneficial to the community.
Thank you. Great. Amy?
I'm just assuming that the school board has also been, kept apprised of this over the time that this has been discussed and so that we're all on the same page, basically. Okay. Thanks.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much. Ann, if you call for the vote, please.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Great, thank you. I see nothing under the other category or in the other category. Marcia, do we have any staff comments?
No staff comments.
Great, thank you. Mike, you want to lead off roundtable?
I have nothing.
Thank you. Rick?
Yeah, very quickly, we have a subcommittee of the grounds and remembrance KIA upgrades set for June 28th at 8:30 here at Council Chambers. Mike, John, myself, Fred, and possibly Dana. So I'm sure we'll have more to report in the coming months.
Okay. Great, thank you. John?
I just want to remind the council that the Development Committee of the whole has a meeting next Monday on the 25th for the Dublin Arts Council. Looking forward to seeing you all there. That's it.
Thanks. Kathy?
Ann, will we get materials delivered to us ahead of time?
Yes.
Okay. Takes me a long time. No, I would just like to thank Marcia for such thorough reports. I see Mary Kay here. I will be going through this when I'm on jury duty, so it will take a couple of weeks. But thank you very much for all the reports that you got to us this time.
Yeah, Dave and Mary Kay did all the work. They get, it's their hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave and Mary Kay.
Is that all, Kathy?
Yes, it is.
I'm not trying to cut you short.
Just as long as you're reminding everybody about Fourth of July, that's it.
Okay.
That's easy.
Amy?
We'll be together again before Fourth of July. I do not have anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Couple things.
a timeline for transition. We're going to do some press releases and those types of things as we get closer to the fall, and then we get to the winter where we're actually coming together in one publication. We will have done a lot of publicity leading up to that point, so the community is aware of, you know, the new one-stop-shop of where to find their community education programs. So it's been great working with Matt and his team, and if there's any questions I can answer, I will do so, but I just wanted to thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
I have. Go ahead. Go ahead. First off, I know this has been something that takes a long time, and I want to congratulate you on this. I think the idea of utilization of the city's facilities in total means more people can participate in different programs, and it was confusing, by the way, when I got that other bulletin from the schools, but I would congratulate both of you for doing this for the community. It makes total sense. No, it wasn't easy, but I think it will turn out to be beneficial to the community.
Thank you. Great. Amy?
I'm just assuming that the school board has also been, kept apprised of this over the time that this has been discussed, and so that we're all on the same page, basically. Okay. Thanks.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much. Ian, if you call for the vote, please.
Mrs. Boring?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter?
Yes.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh?
Yes.
Great, thank you. I see nothing under the other category or in the other category. Marcia, do we have any staff comments?
No staff comments.
Great, thank you. Mike, you want to lead off roundtable?
I have nothing.
Thank you. Rick?
Yeah, very quickly, we have a subcommittee of the grounds of remembrance, KIA upgrades, set for June twenty-eighth at eight-thirty here at council chambers. Mike, John, myself, Fred, and possibly Dana, so I'm sure we'll have more to report in the coming months.
Okay, good. Great, thank you. John?
I just want to remind the council that the Development Committee of the whole has a meeting next Monday on the twenty-fifth for the Dublin Arts Council. Looking forward to seeing you all there. That's it.
Thanks. Kathy?
Ian, will we get materials delivered to us ahead of time?
Yes.
Okay. Takes me a long time. No, I would just like to thank Marcia for such thorough reports. I see Mary Kay here. I will be going through this when I'm on jury duty, so it will take a couple weeks, but thank you very much for all the reports that you got to us this time.
Yeah, Dave and Mary Kay did all the work. They get, it's their hard work.
Thank you, Dave and Mary Kay.
Is that all, Kathy?
Yes, it is.
I'm not trying to cut you short.
Just as long as you're reminding everybody about Fourth of July, that's it.
Okay.
That's easy.
Amy?
We'll be together again before Fourth of July. I do not have anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Couple things. I think all of council got a copy of the Senate President's Letter of Recognition with respect to the dedication of the Thaddeus Kaschusco Park on May twelve, so I'm guessing there's a more formal document and the original or that we will properly display somewhere.
Yes.
So we appreciate that. Also, just a reminder that tomorrow evening, I think it's beginning at five-thirty, we'll have our Amberly Park, Community Park dedication, so hope you all come. I don't know what the weather forecast is for that, but.
I don't know.
Besides hot.
Hot, yeah.
Besides hot. Hopefully there'll be ice cream there or something like that, but, excuse me?
Won't need an overcoat.
Won't need an overcoat, so work forward to that. But beyond that, don't have anything else, and your adjourned. Thank you. Lovely, lovely, lovely.